Forty.
Order at seven P M. Hillary, please call the rule.
And.
Here.
That's right. Council of Cost.
Here.
Councillor, the Council President Lorenson. Council McMillan.
Here.
And so Romer.
Here.
So it's Charles.
Here.
Raise for plugging the agents.
Plus, ladies and to the flag, the United States of America, two or three. Things on a nation under God invisible with. This world.
Want to thank everybody that tried to attend in person this evening. It's nice to have people in the audience. We're gonna do a mixed bag of meeting formats, online, on the phone, and in person. Any guests who are physically present need to fill out the meeting sheet. That's over there. And if you're gonna be doing remotely, please cut down, cut down the background noise and feedback. You mute themselves when not speaking. And staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give reports to council. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during citizen comments. On the agenda, we had. Both of office for. Council of Reson, but he is unable to be here tonight, so we're gonna postpone till the next meeting. First item on the agenda. Is public hearings for proposed contracting rule changes. For us to hear is to receive testimony regarding the proposed contracting rule changes. Proposed public contract your real changes were drafted by the city attorney and comply with changes in the Oregon contracting law. Testimony received will be used by the council in coming to a decision on the proposal. Audience demonstrations, personal attacks, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We, the council, are here to listen to testimony and come to the best possible decision. Does any member of the council wish to announce any actual or potential conflict of interest as defined by Oregon revised statute, section two forty-four? Hearing none, we'll move on. Does any member of the audience wish to make any challenge to any council members impartiality or ability to speak to participate in this decision? But once, like twice. Moving on. Have we received any correspondence on this? Okay. We're now at the point of meeting where how council will hear any testimony. If you want to comment on the proposed bug contracting rules, please start by stating your name. Does anybody wish to make a statement or comment? Going once. Going twice. Moving on. Does any member of the council have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony since we have been to this point? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing on the proposed public contractor will change closed at seven oh three P M. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Does any councillor wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? No, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the business items and the consent agenda as submitted.
Sorry. All favor. I'm opposed. Excellent. Next item on the agenda is a financial report for January. Are there any questions or discussion or concerns? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the January twenty twenty-three financial reports and journal entries that submitted.
So all a favor. I. Post. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is agenda adjustments. Are there any agenda adjustments for the meeting? So that was just the delegations. Next item on the agenda is delegations. As representative from the show department here, no, are they online tonight? Do they say?
No, I think he's coming in person, but he's coming from New York's.
Okay, and it'll be just any others. So let's come back to him. Next is a citizen comments period. This is time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to address the council on any item of concern. Please unmute your comments to about ten or three minutes. Oh, man, that could, that could got me real quick. If you wish to speak, please introduce yourself and state your address. Is there anyone in the audience or online wish to address council? Really? Come on. No? Okay, moving on. Reinforcement counsel. Start off with Hillary in the city administrative report.
So question was raised about the citywide garage sale last year basically got rained out. Those saw several families withdrew at the last minute and those that participated saw very few people coming just because it was, the weather was so bad. And we were asked about moving it later in the year. It's been on the same date for something like fifteen years. It used to, in the past, a few years ago, there's a cylinder school did their Bloom and barbecue fundraiser at the same time. So had we moved it then, it would have impacted them. But I checked with them and they are not doing it now. So. So potentially we could move it. Some would be unhappy that we broke with tradition. Others would be very happy that they had better odds with better weather. Links to that question is the way it's set up currently is the garage sales the first weekend in May and then the cleanup is the second weekend in May, which is awfully nice. If you have things in your garage sale that don't spell, you finish up the curb and get picked up. So a suggestion from some of the staff was look at maybe the first weekend in June with the cleanup day after June until earlier in the year. My concern with moving the cleanup date too much later is right now we have a cleanup day in the spring and we have a cleanup day in the fall. And if we move the garage sale to August, and then we also move the cleanup day to August, then we have two cleanup dates very close to each other and a whole bunch of time in the year with no cleanup day. So that's kind of the balance there is if we want to move it a little bit and the cleanup day two, or if we want to move it till July, or if the weather will be really good. In which case I'd recommend keeping the spring cleanup day in the spring so that we don't. It really helps us with ordinance, unfortunately. We can send very nice letters saying, hey, your property is a little bit, you know, chaotic. It may become an ordinance violation, but there's a spring cleanup day coming up, but please feel welcome to put anything out on the curb. I mean, it's a, you know, a very nice way, hurdle way to take off our business force. So. So that, that, those are kind of all the options up there in the air and then just what council do.
I mean, I think keeping the pickup next to the garage sale is probably the best idea. Just thinking how busy the end of the summer gets and I know a lot of the garage sales in at least our neighborhood don't get as busy when it's like a hundred degrees either. It's early June seems like. An okay time in my opinion, and that it's before Harrisburg and Brownsville when school gets out. So if there's any other people who are just trying to get rid of school stuff or anything like that, it might be an easier time.
Yeah, I mean, I started like the idea of early June as well, too, not pushing it super far back, but maybe keeping it more so away from like the rainy season.
I wish you leave it. Weather happens, weather happens in June, weather happens in May, it happens. I've seen people out there in the rain, tons of people. I think it's maybe more related to. Other things.
And I have no preference one way or the other. Well. I agree whether it happens. But I think probably the. Moving them both just to get it done, just. It's not really gonna hurt anything, I don't think, to do it that way.
We also try it per year and if people need it, we can put it back.
Definitely do that, too. What do the people in the room think? The guests.
Fifteen years, they love to plan their time around that, right here.
How many times has it rained during that? I don't think that many. Times. I never ran the garage sale. I was just there.
I can say answering the phone in the city. I am. I have some requests to move.
I know a few of my neighbors have stopped participating in the garage sale just because they don't have canopies and they're tired of moving stuff. In and out of a garage and I don't know if it's just my section that I live in in Halsey, but I don't know anyone who actually parks in a garage. Their garage is all storage, so it's like they can move the garage sale in the garage.
We give it a try for a year, and if it doesn't work out, we'll get a lot of complaints or issues like that. We can always change it back.
Is that okay?
I like that idea.
All right. Kind of related to this, I need to let you know, I don't think this is gonna be a concern, but Sweetland Sanitation had to schedule their household hazardous waste event. For the first weekend in October, it's usually the second, and our cleanup is usually the first weekend of October, so they're flipping those. So the household hazards waste will be the first weekend in October and our cleanup will be the second weekend in October. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. So question, and this is really a question of if it'll fit into the budget or not, because we need to rip on this building, but if it fits into the budget. Does council want me to apply for a rare member for a second year? I see work that Julia is doing now that we continue. And there's other, like if we get the grant, we could move into actually doing the park improvements. If we don't, we're gonna want to do another grant. But there's also, we've, you know, had a recommendation to G I S Matt Halsey's utilities, which I think is a good idea. Help setting up the asset management system. Potentially creating community events or a festival. Also, the strip of land north of City Vault that is in our proposed parks plan to turn into a park. It's not zoned correctly. Sometimes you walk by a map and realize something you should have figured out about nine months ago. So potentially we might use them to work through rezoning the land to make it usable for perk. I don't know if this is with a budget. I'll have to work through the proposed budget for it, but my question is, does council want me to try to budget for that or not?
I think that the work I've seen her do, it has been. Much more than I expected out of, out of a. A rare member. It's been absolutely phenomenal. And questions she asked, a city day. Okay, wow, somebody else is thinking this is awesome, you know? My opinion is absolutely, but what say you all?
Yeah, but I think about it, I think that's a good idea.
Similar question. Lynn County does chip seal every other year in the summer, and they go through various parts of the county, and we have the opportunity to. Invite them to come in and or roads in Halsey, you can pay for it. We don't have a grant to pay for it this time, so it'd come out of our highway trust fund revenue. But it's an opportunity to help extend the life of roads that. Are not broken down enough that they've got to be replaced so that they can last longer. Does change the road surface. There were some comments after we did it the last time, but I didn't have any heartfelt complaint. I didn't have people call me, oh, my God, what did you do to the road? It's terrible. Just have people say, yeah, that's a different surface, and my kids noticed it when they tried to skateboard. So. My question is, do you want, I mean, we've, we've kind of surveyed the roads and had conversations with Lynn County about it, but I'd want to check with, with the council if you want us to proceed. If we can afford to do so.
Memphis is gonna be a while before we get to doing some actual resurface, complete resurface. Chip seal wouldn't, wouldn't hurt.
We've done little bits of it that we paid for with the S C A grant this summer, the East East Street, those two are off the street will be done. But, you know, either you're, if we get the grant, which we didn't this time, we get to do one or two blocks and all the roads in Halsey are aging probably faster than we can tear them out and resurface them. So where we can extend the life, it. Potentially helps our whole road system.
I think it's a good idea if we get, if we get swing it. I think it makes sense. Sure.
All right. So we're funding update. It looks like we will reach, we'll get funding through the clean water revolving loan. We don't know the terms of the loan or if there will be loan forgiveness, and I've asked them to estimate for us, even though, you know. Prior to war, because there's this whole process, we're applying for a categorical exclusion for environmental review, but even to get the categorical exclusion, we have to work with all the cross cutting agencies. All the agencies with cross cutting authority, which means D E U and. The E P A and the historical preservation and the Department of State Land and. Others, flood, plane management and all of it. So it's pretty intense process. There is a process for notifying each agency and basically requesting a categorical. Saying basically, we're doing all our work inside our own pipes. We're entering through our own manholes. Yes, we'll have heavy equipment in the area. It will sit on paved asphalt streets. We're not disturbing soil. In fact, we, there were three root balls, root balls we're supposed to dig up, and I had a conversation with the engineer, and there is a way to go in from inside, ground it out, and then put patches in there that should prevent future damage from more roots in the area. So we can, we can promise to do all our work from inside our pipes, but even to get that a category exclusion, we have to go through this whole process. Fortunately, Julia has wrapped up a couple of her projects and she is taking that on for me, or I would be like really frantic about now. I was a little frantic last week. So she's gonna start going through that notification process, but that's the reason I wanted to find out if there's going to be loan forgiveness, because this process makes it take longer. If we have to go through the E P A, it could be as much as six months or a year before we get permission to move forward. That time makes the project more expensive because inflation and steadily increasing infrastructure costs. So I have asked them to let us know. If there will be loan forgiveness, so we can do sort of cost benefit analysis, you know, compared investment of staff time and increase in costs versus what we will get as part of that loan. And whether that will be a financial benefit for the city. So that's sort of where we are with that process. The well funding, we did not get funding for the same drinking water revolving loan fund, which means no loan forgiveness. But we have submitted requests with both Senator Hayden and Representative Hay to try to get funding directly from the legislature, the capital. Project award. I'm not sure if that's exactly what it's called, it's called about that. So they will be watching for an opportunity to add our well project to an infrastructure bill. And Senator Hayden sounded up the state representative eight. Less so. I mean, she, she wants to do it, and it just told that a lot of the infrastructure money had already been spent, but they will try. If they get that, then it's all grant money. So then we're using our R P A and grant money from the state. So if we get that, that's really, really wonderful. If we don't, our next stop is still for financing. There are some opportunities for that, but they will not involve loan forgiveness. They would, however, let us use our R P A funds before those are gone, so that we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars for new wells to the five hundred thousand songs for new well. They're still worth looking into at this point. If we miss out on funding through the legislature, I will then bring you all the options I have and. We can have a conversation again about. Which is the direction you want to go, but just not date break. I figured you'd be okay with free money, so I just asked for that.
Reveal that makes sense.
And the Rural Economic Alliance, actually, do you know they're removing through the planning process? They. Gather survey, we come all across our region. They did interviews with business owners from across our region. They compiled that data. We worked through. You know, focusing process and the consultant distracting. Strategic plan that'll be reviewed and refined, and then after it's a little bit more than a state, it will come to the councils. So you'll see that also as a member of that group. And I think that is it.
Thank you very much. No, no questions, concerns, comments? Move on to public works with Andy. Are you there, Andy?
I am here, though.
Hey, there.
Hello. So my report. We did some wa- a water leak on the six inner block of. West First. And it was a service line. This is a service line that was put in back in eighty-nine that they thought, well, this lot's gonna be able to. Maybe have an area that needs to have water. Well, found out that. It was unable, we weren't able to be able to. Service that line. So we went ahead and we fixed the leak and so. The other things that we did was we raised three meter boxes and black flow, backflow boxes. And a couple, sorry. Please apologize. I'm fumbling. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're fine.
Thank you. Thank you. There you go. So we raised three meter boxes, backflow box and a couple, couples. Customer shut offs in town. Out of the lagoon, we created the roads at the lagoon and. I did the I N I report and. Bio solids recycling report. So we installed the new auto dollar at the lagoon. We're waiting for the power and some relays to finish the job. Did the annual I N I, sorry, O dot. Street mileage report. We did a road survey, picked up the best candidates for chip sealing for this upcoming season. We're getting cost for that, and I've talked to Hillary about that. It's a couple areas in town that we've done water leaks. That need to be patched, and I got some quotes from Levi with Blackstone for cost for those areas. We did finish up. The door that was the custom made door down at the bottom part in the cubby area. At City Hall. And we trashed some conduit. For power to the wood train station cover. Updated on that, we have. Norms that got a permit and we're waiting for them to schedule to do that work. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any questions, comment? Thank you much.
Thank you.
And that leads us to the little report was here.
Hello.
Hello.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Happy Valentine's Day.
So last month we had an average of five patrons per day. Eighty came into the library last month. We did a sleepover. I loved it. We had three families sign up and all of them came early because we had some future librarians at my house that evening. I'm glad to see it happen again. After we went through all of our book donations, I invited the friends at the library, the group that works mostly with Lebanon library to come and take what they wanted out of the bookmobile. So we unloaded a lot of books, which I thought was awesome. You know, the bookmobile is a great place for storage, but I think temporary storage, because it does have some leaks. So they want to move things in and then out quickly. The next time we do a home load of the bookmobile, I think it'll be a recent time, the local teachers. I'm meeting through all the books in the library and, you know, I told you I was giving it a minor facelift and I'm in the process of buying new books. I think we added most forty books to the library and then Billy and Abby are being removed, the heater, the old heater, and repairing the walls. So we just need to fill it in with a custom bookshelf, which. Is pricey, so we're looking at a line to see if we can't be something that would, but that we could add two to three hundred bucks, put into this one little bookshelf. So I was really thankful for those two. For taking care of that so quickly. Still selling remaining plaques on the donor hall at the entrance to the library. I've had people interested, but no one is actually seeing the deal yet. And then working on the five K. It will be Saturday, April twenty-second at nine A M. I finished the promotional poster and the sponsorship sponsorship request letter on the written form and everything should go out this week. The online race after your profile is done and should be ready as soon as we start promoing it. And paramedics are on board, so I think we're in a good place, you know, considering we're three months out, but still, there's a lot of work to be done. In fact, I was struggling with the rabbits for some of it, and so I got my son on. Face time with me today and after two hours, and I think we're good to go. Um, they go days to. Also the test day. And I know y'all heard that I gave notice, but I'd like to say my goodbyes speech to them this week, but it was, it was a surprisingly quick decision. He's having surgery again and they need to be available to go down and help them. They live in southern California, so it was a big surprise. Not to be leaving. We get to. I'm happy to answer any.
And Woody.
And I have the Maddie and Julia are going to be helping Sarah with the five case, and she'll be gone at the end of March. They'll be able to continue that trio, and since she was able to give us until the end of the winter, hoping to get somebody hired and into training when she leaves, for trying.
I think you go.
Thank you.
You can always come back. Okay, if that is that, then we will circle back to Chair's Department.
Okay.
Your parents, sure.
So pretty skinny, five and a half page report, which is nice. Seven traffic stops, five citations, some notable things that happened, quite a few stored units at the end of town were entered. We did issue some more citations to Diamond K. We did so actually again in February also for some trailer issues. And then Portmatt is a beautiful guy, broken into here in. So. All right.
I'm losing them.
We did everything we could to track that guy down for hours. And. So I'm gonna skip over this really quick because I'm putting, making graphs over the last week, kind of compares all the contracting together, so all they can kind of see where everybody stands. Are there any questions about what was in the monthly report for calls before we start going down some rabbit holes?
Anyone?
No, not there. This is the one. Okay, so traffic citations. Early in the year, fifty-six is where all the ended. So. In my opinion, that's about comparable with the hours that are contracted. Where we have that we see here, if you look to other, the lower ends, ones were Thio and Lion, those are the two that have comparable or much lower contracts with us. For the most part, the traffic numbers, the higher the contract, the more traffic, you're, you're gonna see more traffic stops, more citations, more warning, stuff like that. Does that make sense to anybody? The citation. Fifty, fifty-six. Type of citation on the year. Calls for service. Two hundred and ninety-one. So that's in the same position as, as citation, so. Not, not much to say really, although the fairly quiet town comparable to the Sile and Lions. The one thing to note from my experience, when you have multiple highways and it's surrounded by a bigger city. Even though it's a smaller city, I've seen instances where these calls will be much higher. So even though we have high ninety-nine, two-two-eight and Albany to the north, Eugene, easy access to I five, Peoria Road and whatnot, our calls are still fairly low. Under three hundred called a year. I'm not worried about that at all. If we were going back and look at all the monthly reports, a lot of that, too. Is traffic and an extra patrol that we create, do a business check and whatnot. So it doesn't necessarily mean we responded to two hundred and ninety-one nine-one-one calls. So these calls are self-generated to alarms, stuff like that. Part of the call for service. Crashes, this is a good one. All calls, we only have four, which is fantastic. All calls, we only have four, um which is fantastic, especially for, for some of the complaints we get and some of the speedings and. Complaints, people run stop signs and whatnot. Probably does not help a lot, branches, you see Millersburg at, at thirty five, they have. A few streets there, they're fifty miles an hour in there, forty five and thirty five. Speeds, great crashes and they're looking at actually changing a lot of their speeds. Um because of, of fractures and the death, um I think they're gonna get rid of all forty five, fifty zones and just go to thirty five everywhere. Uh which I think they'll bring those numbers down on it, so four crashes on the year, this is pretty, pretty good. And then the rest, um again, at the lower end, which is good, uh thirty one. Um I didn't break them down so much, there's, I like to think of arrests in two ways. So one, we get a call of something happening, we go arrest that person. The other way, we arrest somebody as self-initiated activity, right? We stop a car, getting more, making contacts, stuff like that, so. Being on the lower end, that's good, we don't have a lot of rip rap, the rip rap we do, we try to keep moving. Um but not all of those arrests are from up for fine, the number one call or issues or something like that. Um a lot of them are gonna be more arrest, um maybe some petty shoplifting, stuff like that. Eli's threatened revoked. Questions about arrests? Or in general?
I appreciate the graphs, they're great.
I don't know if I gave the, the skill before, but anytime you guys wanna ride along for a couple hours or check out Halsey or you wanna see. The wild west of by five. It's not to do a full day, but uh usually you can kind of get a feel of what we see. An hour or two, um and how people change their behavior and the things you guys see really. We don't necessarily see the same thing. Uh we drive a billboard around, you know, we're not, and people running stop signs and you can kind of see how. Hard it is for it to catch people doing stupid stuff. But yeah, any, anytime, reach out and we can do. Couple hour ride along.
Are you doing, are you doing Citizens Academy again?
Yes, they just put a post out about that, actually, I believe. Yeah, that's another fun one, I teach a couple of classes on that, firearms, if you were to get accepted at the Citizen Academy, we go shoot guns for like six hours. Most worth the guns, pretty much. You get to check out SWAT, animal control, patrol division, we do jail walkthrough. And gosh, the civil division at the courthouse. And before we put people through simulators, we have a big screen that has like live video and scenarios that we put deputies in to. Judge how what tool they're gonna grab first and stuff like that, uh it's a, it's a pretty long series. Of classes, but I think it's very beneficial, there's a lot of behind the scenes work. Public really doesn't, doesn't see.
Like a multiple day thing or just a one?
It's, well. I think they are wanting to be two days a month.
Okay.
But it's like five or six months long. So it's like every other Tuesday for like six months. I think that's the schedule they're wanting to do.
Wonderful idea.
Yeah. Even the naysayers take it and they like it, so.
Oh, I bet.
More questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Be safe. So the next item on the agenda, it's all business and first one is to respect council president. Any questions, comments, concerns? Is there something that Hillary wants to say about it?
Mayor, council president Lawrence has stuck in and said that he um does not, he has, he has some health concerns, his wife has some health concerns, he. Does not want to do that, this coming cycle and he's worried that he wouldn't be able to fulfill the responsibilities.
Well, families always first. And I hope he's feeling better and she's feeling better. I would uh. Does anybody who's interested in being council president? Has time to put towards it, energy to put towards it?
If we need someone, um I can, I just don't know since we're. Do we wanna wait until everyone's here to do it since we're, if it's a new president, do we want Ken and Michelle to be able to have a say in that or?
Um I don't know how Michelle feels about it, Ken would, would kind of made it clear that you couldn't go on without him, he didn't want you waiting on him, so he's.
Yeah. I, I would like to have everybody in their seats if possible, but I don't think that's gonna be possible, feasible, I'd like to get it. Feel as close to front end of the year as possible.
If, if it helps the council president, the only. Right, well, has, has three responsibilities and mostly they aren't tapped very much. One is if there's a meeting the mayor misses, the council president runs the meeting. I'm happy to prepare for the meeting, so you don't miss things, um generally do for the mayor as well. Um the, the next is that, and this doesn't have to be the council president, but the last several years it has been, it has to be a third center on the bank account. Um Ken hasn't asked to step away from that yet. Um but it's, it's a good practice because the mayor cannot send some check.
Right.
Council president cannot sign there on a check, I get some my own, so there always has to be three, so you hit two signatures on every check. So that probably the council president, I don't want to get them set up as a signer on the bank account. That also means that they can review accounts payable invoices and sign off on those checks. And it means that they uh can review the binder, which has the financial reconciliation to the end of each month. Generally, the mayor does that, but council president can do it as well. Um and then the third thing is usually not called upon, but the council president is an alternative liaison for um for city staff, so if. Uh if the mayor were unavailable and I needed to check in with somebody or somebody on my staff needed to check in with somebody that was not me. Um and normally they would go to the mayor, but the mayor wasn't available, the next person would be to go to the council president. That has had to happen for a while, but that is a part of that role, so those are sort of the three things and those don't happen that often, but that's what that person would be. Would need to be comfortable with.
I see lots and lots of people to make for this.
I'm, I'm willing to do it.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing it if we need someone, um I mean, I have the time, I'm gonna stay at home, mom, I live in Halsey, so. I'm always here.
I would entertain a motion. Either one of you two wanna entertain it or?
Uh definitely not.
So I need somebody to make a motion.
I don't know, I kind of feel like we should have everybody here.
Okay.
Yeah, let's postpone the next meeting.
Let's postpone it. Let them all think about it.
Yeah. Soon as they're month.
Soon as you're gonna jump up and dance a meeting. Hey. Okay, so with that. We're gonna do. Want to new business of the T M D L. Hillary will be so kind as to.
It's a very exciting spreadsheet. The total maximum daily load that's with uh stormwater runoff. Um there are accidents and it was. Technically, this is voluntary, except not really. Um and we go back and forth each year to get approved by um DEQ. And so we actually just did this in September because we had to change it to comply with some updates to the mercury requirements. Um and when you looked at it then, the status window was blank because she wanted us to look at the um. At the plan, not at where we were with the plan, so the update you get annually has the status window, which shows where we are and what we've done with each of these steps. Um the big change is we did meet all our treaty um tree city requirements and have been approved for the tree city program. Um our both, the Oregon forestry program and now I've heard back from the everyday foundation. Um last year, there was one notice that we published annually in our newsletter that we missed. We made a note of that, we will make sure to not miss it again, it was specifically around illicit and illegal discharge into the ditch. Other than that, we're pretty much on track with things, there was nowhere I had to fly once they were, you know, non-compliant. Um many of these things are ongoing or have been resolved, we built a new website, we did have to kind of rebuild the things we put on the old website that meet these requirements. But that is done. Uh and one piece of good news is that we don't have to update our code language to create um escalating. Uh escalating enforcement for illegal dumping illicit discharge because she said with the code says. This code says that each day counts as a separate offense, that makes a requirement. There's other code language they want us to adopt that I have a problem with, but it doesn't have to be adopted until twenty twenty seven, so I feel like we still have a little bit of time to push back. Um the new requirement this year that is uh difficult for us to figure out how to meet is a qualitative analysis, we're supposed to. Do a survey that shows what people already know and then teach a class or do a program and then do the same survey again with the same people and show that they learned something. And Halsey. We have trouble getting people sent up from Hertz committee and that's fun. They just go up to take a class on illicit and illegal stormwater runoff and pollution and take a quiz at the beginning and a quiz at the end, I feel I'm really going to. My best idea right now is a Bellas gift certificate, but if you have other ideas. So I don't know, I mean. This part of the feedback um given to both our rep and our senator, although it was after city day, um was suggestion that DEQ be funded to hire. Um a couple of community outreach coordinators that could actually go to small cities and teach these programs, because at this point. Teaching the program is gonna be me or Larissa or Maddie and we are not in any way experts in illicit discharge, so I can download. Something from the DEQ and, and teach you all of that, but I think it would be probably more compelling if somebody who really understood it could answer questions. Very passionate about the subject, we're teaching the subject and that will bring new knowledge into the town. And so that's, I'd really like to get to hire somebody to offer these programs, but.
Cause they listen to small communities so very often.
So if, if you see me do a really weird looking event sometime in the next couple of months that involves bribery, that's, it's probably for this.
Bring locals in.
Oh, there's yet, well, it was third question.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns, persons? Guys are so easy today. Next is the really super fun part. Uh ordinances and resolutions. Absolutely blown my hair back. It blew my hair back, ordinances and resolutions. A deaf mission to read the ordinance, this resolutions by title only, please and thank you. Resolution two zero P three dash seven one five, a joint resolution, city council and the local contractor review board. Opting out of the attorney general's model of a contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for the city of Halsey. This fun thing. Any questions from council, comments and or concerns? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty three dot seven one five, a joint resolution in the city council. A local contractor review board opting out of the attorney general's model, public contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for the city of Halsey.
Second. All in favor? Alright, opposed. Next item on the agenda is resolution two zero two three dash seven one six, a resolution of the city of Halsey updating, adopting. Employee handbook for the city of Halsey and repeals all prior versions of the imported handbook. Do you have a concise proof of that?
Yes, one book that was near anything that. Was major content changes and red, so it could have been easy to flip through and find just the changes if you wanted to read just those. But I wanted to have the quote back now, since you haven't looked at it in a couple of years, um little things like commas and. They couldn't have attention to change that, but anything that changed the content, I know, right? Um the biggest change, some um legal required language around um. In the, in the discrimination section around hair texture, um. The biggest changes where I added back in the introductory period of employment, this was actually in this originally. It got out several years ago because the attorney had said basically. Probation doesn't work anymore, if you have somebody that's on probation, you have to go through the same process. And then you would with an employee that's spending with you the whole time, you can't just say, okay, well, you're on probation, we don't like you, simply. You have to like go through the counseling steps you normally would, so he said, well, what's the point of this, let's take it out. It was in the model handbook they gave me and I said, you guys said this was kind of pointless and she said, well, it puts people. In the frame of mind where they understand that this is a period of learning and this is a period in which they're going to have close contact with you, they're gonna be learning, they're gonna be. Training, they're gonna decide it's a good fit for them, you're gonna be deciding that they're a good fit for you and it just kind of sets that stage for, hey, you don't need to walk in the door knowing everything. You need to walk in the door open to what we need to teach you. Um we have, in the past, while I've been here, I had a couple of times where I hired somebody who didn't come in the door with that feeling, they came in the door feeling like they knew more than everybody else in the room. And that is not a good recipe for success for them or for us, so I went ahead and put it back in there, um understand, I mean, nothing magic happens at ninety days. Other than it just kind of makes this person and their supervisor focus in on the fact that, hey, we need to be in close contact during this period, make sure you learn everything you need and. Make sure you have the skills that you claimed to have in the interview, so, and or at least that we can bring you up to that level, so. Uh that's what that's back in there for and then leave donation. Um is just sort of formalizes that process in which if somebody um has a long-term sickness and they don't have enough paid leave, it allows other employees to donate leave to that person. Um in, in a crisis and I, it doesn't create additional liability for the city, so I didn't think council would have a concern about that. We'd like adding that mechanism in there, it lets us be kind to each other, so. Those were the two larger changes.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just had kind of one or a couple, um it says generally lasts no less than ninety days. Wouldn't it be nice if they just knew it was ninety days, just? Have it be ninety days?
Yep.
And then is there any job rotation or um if a person is working for the city? And they apply for a promotion, they get hired, things don't work out, they have no um. No opportunity to go back to their old position or are they just out?
That would be hard because um we are a very small staff, so there's two people in public works, there's two and a half people in the office. If we have to hold a position open for ninety days, that's ninety days in which. You know, somebody is doing two jobs instead of one, or maybe two people are doing two jobs instead of one, so holding a position open for a period of time would be very hard. Um and it would, our service levels would suffer for that. If we haven't held it open, if we've hired somebody else and then we say, well, this person's going back into their position, so even though you've done very good work, we don't have a position for you anymore. That's kind of gonna create some other problems, but I think just because we are so small, I question whether that's feasible or not. If that's important to council, I can do some research, but I, I can tell you that when I was promoted to be the administrator. It was actually first I was interim. Um while they did a hiring process, so there are about three months where I was doing two full-time jobs and there was a half-time position. The office with me and I darn near burned. The office with me and I darn near burned out. And then after I officially had the position, it was another two months until I could get Laura to hire. And seriously, five months of doing two full time. It's pretty brutal. It's it's hard. So I prefer not to set up a structure that requires that.
Okay.
But I like the idea of clarifying it. Yeah, I think I just took their their. Their boilerplate on the idea of clarifying it's just ninety days. You know what to expect. You don't have to worry about, well, it could be for five months. I know I'm okay after ninety days.
True. Anyone else? Have a conflict of interest on this one as my life is a city employee. So I'm hands off on this one. So we can either have a motion to approve, do I do a motion as amended?
I haven't forgotten that about Scott, but without Scott, you don't have form. So we need.
Come on, Scott. Thank you for that. Well, this was.
That gives me.
Right. Take it to next month. So then the next one is resolution adopting paid leave. Order of policy for the city of Halsey.
I need you somewhere on this, but I suspect you're going to have the same situation.
Yeah.
All right. You want to summarize?
Uh, let's just do summary, just rather giggles and then we have, you know, and yet we're gonna have to push it to March.
Okay. Pay leave Oregon is the new program where there's payroll tax, that money goes in and the Oregon Employment Department manages a. Program where employees can have leave and have it paid. For medical or for safety. And it's a mandatory program in the state of Oregon. It's that. The employees. Every employee has to pay and the employer is smaller than twenty five don't. But if you don't, you can't access grants that help you pay for temporary replacements for those employees to go out. So. I have us paying in at this time. We can opt out, but like be able to access those grants. But it's a good policy to have. It's good to have a policy in place that just clarifies employer responsibility of notification. That they're going to be taking this leave. And you know, communication about if they want you sick time to supplement it and just just to clarify those. Those roles and those expectations so that we don't have somebody who's, you know, a few weeks in and then says, oh, by the way, I'm asleep. I'm protected and. If they're asked to tell us that they're going to be on intermittent. You know, extended leave and it's just, it's good to have a policy in place. The program is still, although they've started collecting for it, they're still working out details at the administrative level of the state about. These interact, protected leaves interact. So. I may be back in you in September with an updated version of this if it needs to change, but this is CIS's. Template and then I tweaked it a little bit.
Wouldn't it be nice if they would have all that? Worked out before they forced it out to me.
Yeah, they've had three years to work it out.
Okay, well. Post that tomorrow until there's three more changes in the next. Next item is resolution two zero two three dash seven one eight. A resolution authorizing the city of Halsey to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation. Department for improvements at the Halsey Memorial Park and delegating authority to the city administration to sign the application. Do tell.
This is a requirement for the OPRD grant. Really is working on it now. They've given her a list of about twenty attachments. This is one of the attachments she needs for the grant application.
Any questions, concerns, comments? No, I entertain the motion.
I move that the governing body of Halsey, of the city of Halsey adopts resolution twenty twenty three dash seven one eight. The resolution authorizing the city of Halsey to apply for the local government grant. From Oregon Parks and Rec. For improvements at the Halsey Memorial Park. And delegating authority to the administrator to sign the application.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Next is ordinance two zero two three dash four four three, amending city of Halsey municipal code. Chapter seven point zero five relating to itinerant merchants and temporary businesses. This is the first reading of the ordinance. If you could give us a summary, please.
So this ordinance was recently updated. It was in September. August or something. It was it was recently updated. We had somebody recently selling produce on the corner and made him get a night in or in. Or maybe get a peddler's license and in doing so that triggers me for a background check. And he gave me out of country ID and an address to California. And usually our background check had been to run stuff through Oregon. State police and that was not going to yield anything in this case. So I was talking with the attorney and he looked at our ordinance. He said, well, you don't. Have anything in here that gives you permission to do a background check. But I have concerns about you promising to do it because a background check is no longer just running through a single. It's like. Contacting multiple organizations and it's a long period of time and you have to get permission to do it. And then you have to defend how you've used that information that you've gathered. And then if you're. Betting. Peddlers or street vendors and they do something wrong, you expose the city to liability because you didn't do a good enough background check. You're going to have to demonstrate the. The background check steps that you took. And after that being a two and a half person.
Oh, yeah.
Office, that's a little bit intense. There are actually services you can use, but they're expensive and they're subscription. So his recommendation was to take that out and replace it with time, place and manner restrictions as then you. They do it at certain times, you can't do it in certain ways, you can't do it, you know, and. Replace that with sort of a registration process. They have to show ID. They have to give information for the company they're associated with. They have to sign an agreement. They don't approach houses with a no solicitation sign. Actually sign an agreement that's sure they understand our rules. They can't solicit before a certain time, after a certain time. And then if they break that agreement, they can be cited into court, just like any other code violation. So he suggested setting it up like other issues in our code. Somebody breaks the rule, they go to court, they can't find and they would also longer be. Eligible to have a permit for two years. So that's what you see in front of you. If. Obviously, it's a first reading. It can be amended. If there are other things you want me to start doing to it, but he has, he he did review both of these ordinance. This is an approved one. So.
Any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions?
So we don't know if he was a murderer or not. We didn't have a language in the ordinance that would allow. In between the ordinance that the city administrator will make a judgment of something about. Discovering if they're immoral with character. It didn't say we will do a background check and. Having vague language in the ordinance is dangerous because how do I determine whether that person is of moral character? Well, he's it wasn't, it wasn't going to come up through. I have no way to find out.
That seems insane to me that.
Yeah. I mean, you don't know his intentions, really. I mean, sure, he's nice. Right until sometimes, right? I give you somebody who not willing who they are, so I'm on the corner. I just follow me, man. I understand.
And I I agree that, you know, the city of Halsey shouldn't be performing background checks on people, but. You know, like you were saying, I don't want pedophiles selling ice cream to our kids either. Is there a way that, another way to vet them or potentially shift the burden? Like, is there a? A vendor's license or something that's required by another? Entity that we could? Play off of?
No, there's a subscription service. That costs. Thirty or forty dollars a month. And understand we issue maybe one of these a year. So that is a pretty. Hefty expense to budget for that would do. A deeper level of background check than running through SP. There's not somebody else that can do background checks for us, other than a service like that can do that. And then it's just a question of, you know, what we pull out of the budget to make space for that for this. We can't ban it completely because there are free speech issues involved, which is one of the reasons this is crafted in the way it is. We can't say you just can't go from house to house because if it's a newspaper. Signing up subscriptions, you get into free speech if it's. It it gets into free speech issues. So instead, what we can do is require they follow the rules. I don't. There's a lot of, we don't background check businesses. You know, somebody hangs out a shingle and opens up and repair. We don't do a background check on them either. We don't do a background check on people when we move into town. We don't do a background check on vendors that do events in the park. I don't, I I understand there's a special concern for us for solicitation. Because it's annoying. People come to our doors and they can be acting suspicious or they can be pushy, but. You can call the sheriff for that. And you can put a no solicitation sign in your window and then they're not allowed to approach and then if they approach at all, you call the sheriff and they're going to get a ticket and they're going to get kicked out of town. Yeah, if you want me to explore figuring out how to pay for that service, I can. Back to that needing a roof will will be trimming other things. So.
This reminds me a lot of the last time we had a similar issue. All the same issues and concerns. Apply. I wish there was a simple boilerplate answer. But anymore, everything I've just said. Everything.
You just can't be there on that corner. Well, actually, this ordinance doesn't let him be on that. Okay, so it, the one of the things I should have mentioned, one of the things that changes in here is that they're not allowed to set up on public property unless it's a city sponsored event. Private property, they have to have permission from that property owner. So it does actually eliminate that gentleman's.
And they would still need to pay the license fee and submit that information.
Yes, we wouldn't have, we would be issuing a license, have information on file on who's in town, what company they work for, contact with the company they work for. Their signed agreement on file. Yeah, I mean, we we can still, there's still a certain level of regulation that's possible.
So in that instance, they would have had. You would have taken a photocopy of. There, the ID that you had in. Okay.
And you know.
If you want me to explore making this ordinance before the next meeting?
Anyone? Okay, so the next item in the agenda. Or next two zero two three dash four four four. Many involving municipal codes seven point one zero related to business registration. Is the first reading of the order of the ordinance. Be so kind.
So this replaces a chapter in our code about business licenses that's been there for a very long time and has not been updated since two thousand fourteen. And I confess, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at it because not any asking questions that would fall into that. And it turns out that entire ordinance was about justifying collecting a business fee for business licenses. And about a decade. Guess not that long ago. At some point. Council decided not to collect fees anymore for that business license because they didn't want it to stifle economic development. They didn't want to create a barrier. So we have an ordinance that says. We have the right to charge fees, except as long as I've been with the city, we haven't been asked to charge fees. So. What I did is change it because. With a number of businesses in Halsey, charging fees is not going to be a significant source of revenue for the city. It's it's not, it's not going to generate revenue that would then. Pay for economic development activities. It's just so small. But it would be valuable to have an accurate registry of what businesses are operating in the city of Halsey. Both because it gives us an opportunity to verify that they comply with our codes. It gives us contacts in the case of ordinance enforcement. It gives us contacts in a case of emergency management. During COVID, it would have given us contacts to forward funding opportunities to to have a a complete listing of which businesses are operating in the city. So this changes the focus. It no longer charges a fee. It's not even talking about a license. It is talking about registering your business. If you're operating businesses to city of Halsey. You submit a registration so we know you're there. We know what you're doing. We know how to get ahold of you.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, so I did have a quick one. I think it's on this one. The. Page sixty nine there. I couldn't find the, it says mobile food units do not need to register. But must comply with the standards in the Halsey municipal code. Seven point three. I couldn't. Find that.
Because it hasn't been qualified into the online codes. That ordinance was passed.
Few months ago, right?
Three or four months ago. And they need to update our codification, but I told them we had two more ordinances coming through. It's. They're getting to it all at once because it charges us less so that there was, I can get you the text of that ordinance.
Okay.
That was adopted. I'm sorry, I don't remember when. If it must have been just before you.
Yeah, it wasn't very long. Yeah.
I think I was here. I just don't remember what it said.
Okay.
Any help?
Yes. As far as this goes.
What's that? Anybody else? Okay. Eight oh five. Here.
Did he have something else that wasn't about that agenda?
Yes. No.
Where I mumbled. Well, it's my time. The the gavel's been struck. I was just curious. I actually asked my coworkers today about our comp time. And I remember in our comp time here. City was kind of low for how much you could accrue. I was just curious. At the county, it's a hundred and twenty hours max. I was curious if that could be bumped up. Cause forty seems. Really low, like old school low. And of course, the time would be. On approval anyways, so. I was curious what you guys thought of that.
I'd love to have the county's budget.
Me too.
Well, we pay out the time either way. They take comp time and a little overtime. So the one thing that a great home time does is pre. Deferred burden, if that makes sense. So instead of paying overtime, since it's crewing, you're getting.
Right.
Free labor, but you're getting labor, but then later suddenly you pay for a whole chunk of it. I'm not sure it matters since the city budget is annual anyways. We tend to look at overall amounts, not week to week amounts. I don't have a concern.
It's not like, the other thing too, I'm I'm pretty sure yours is the same way. If there's a separation, that's go on. You know, it doesn't, that doesn't go with the employee.
Yeah.
So I mean. Not that that's a great thing, but it's the same.
I'll check on that. So.
Yeah, when an employee is separated from the appointment. Any remaining comp time will be paid to the employee. So that's. That actually seems different than usual.
Well, if you think about it, you worked the overtime, it's probably would be illegal for me to withhold. You for that. So I'm not sure. I mean, I can check with the attorney, but I'm guessing we would pay off the comp time. And so I'm thinking it's capped because they don't want you to accrue several thousand dollars worth that hasn't been out all at one bucket.
Yeah.
But I don't. I'm not too concerned. Is that something you want me to explore changing? But give me guidance on where you want it changed to.
I'm just figuring this has to be changed a little bit anyways. And I thought about it today.
Forty does seem pretty low. I would agree with that.
I mean, a hundred and twenty seems good to me. Eighty seems fair. Forty just seems really low. There's not much of accrual. It's it's mostly. Weekend duty. Which adds up slowly, but. I mean. Just a thought.
Is there a consensus? Among those who visit or.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it'd be something at least worth looking into and just seeing kind of. The feasibility and everything around it.
Eighty, one twenty.
Either one.
We'll do some checking. We've got to come back to it next month anyways. You can re adjourn now since.
We're reading.